It's now five thirty. We want to call to order our regular open session meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Here, present.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Present.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Present.
Thank you.
Uh, we could do the pledge of allegiance now, please. Everybody stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For a moment of silence, can we please turn off our cell phones, mute them, please? Thanks. Now we'll have spotlight on success.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, Parents, Staff, and Students. My name is Mr. Ryan Wood, and I am the fifth through eighth grade band director here at Lindup. I'm here this evening to speak about the growth and accomplishments of the Lindup Band Program during the 2024-2025 school year. This year has been great for the Lindup Band Program. There are currently forty-seven students in the Lindup Band Program, which is a roughly three hundred and thirteen percent increase from the beginning of last year, when there were fifteen students in band. We have one graduating eighth grader and three rising eighth graders, all of which, oh yeah, oh yeah. Three rising eighth graders, all of which are showing great leadership in class. The current sixth grade class at Lindup has twenty-nine students total, seventeen of which are in band, approximately fifty-nine percent. The current fifth grade class at Lindup has thirty-three students, twenty-six of which are in band, approximately seventy-eight percent. Um, this growth has been really exciting to see and something that I'm really proud of. Additionally, I was able to start a jazz band this year, which met on Wednesday mornings for thirty minutes. Jazz band is available to sixth, seventh, or eighth grade students, and eleven students decided to sign up this year. Getting up early before school is not easy, but these students showed up and did their very best. I look forward to expanding the jazz band next year with more students and hopefully more performances as well. At the end of April, the band took a field trip to the College of DuPage to see the Black Violin, uh, perform. Black Violin is a Grammy-nominated violin duo consisting of Kevin Marcus on the violin and Will B. on the viola. They have worked with performing artists such as Lupe Fiasco, Aerosmith, and Alicia Keys. We were able to see them perform live, where they played music from their albums, as well as popular songs from the last few years. Black Violin challenges the limitations of classical music by incorporating hip-hop influences. The students and I had a really fun time at this, at this field trip. We've had many performances this year that some of our current middle school band students are going to highlight for you now.
My name, yeah. My name is Nian Jones, and I'm a sixth grade student, and I play clarinet in the middle school band. In December, the bands played at the Winter Program. The fifth grade band played the classic song Jingle Bells. And in the middle school band, we played three exciting pieces. A highlight of the performance was Santa the Barbarian and the Pirates of the North Pole. This piece was my personal favorite because of its intensity and because I like pirates. My favorite part of band was that I got to learn something I've always wanted to learn. Thank you.
My name is Kiana Mister, and I'm a seventh grade student here at Lindup, and I play the clarinet in the middle school band. In February, we performed as part of the Black History Month Program, focusing on Black excellence in music. We performed four songs that us students and Mr. Wood put together. We played Kendrick Lamar's Humble, Beyonce's Break My Soul, Scissor Snoodz, and Lil Nas X's Industry Baby. My favorite part of the performance was playing Kendrick Lamar's song Humble. It's a very popular song, and the crowd likes it. What I like most about band is the change of style. We learned how to sight read music and adjust to notes and tempos. We don't always play the same genre of music, and it's exciting for us and the audience to play. Thank you.
My name is Yossine Thomas, and I'm a seventh grader, and I play percussion in middle school band. This year, we tried something new and performed at two basketball girl games. We played the National Anthem before the game and a few short tunes at halftime, including We Will Rock You, the Hey Song, Eye of the Tiger, and Let's Go Band. My favorite part about this was getting to watch the game and play the National Anthem and Eye of the Tiger. Band gives me the opportunity to have fun, get better, and go places. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Price, and I'm an eighth grade student at Lindup, and I play perc- and I play percussion in the middle school band. I found, our final performance of the year was just a few weeks ago, the Spring Showcase. The fifth grade band played three exercises from the band book. And for the middle school band, we performed five contrasting pieces. My favorite part was when I got my awards and played drums on Pink Panther. Band at Lindup has given me the confidence to explore new levels and challenges. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time and attention while I get to showcase our awesome students and the incredible things we've been able to accomplish this year. I look forward to the coming years where band, the band program continues to grow and flourish. Thank you and have a great evening.
Uh, before you leave, I would like to thank each and every one of you. I have noticed since you first began here at Lindup, the band has grown in leaps and bounds, and I've always made you aware of that. You have been nothing but great with this school, and students, you have surpassed what anyone could have thought you could have done. So never think that you cannot rise higher. Great work.
Thank you so much.
Well, 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 wait, wait, wait. Come on.
Even pause first.
Mr. Wood, students, great job. Um, I too am a band student, um, from middle school through high school, even through college. Um, band is what paid for college for me. So stick with it. I too pay, am a percussionist as well. Drums was my thing. Then I moved up to be drum major in college. So stick with the band, man. It'll pay for education. Trust me. Good job, guys. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. Uh, I think you all have done a great job. You know, we want you guys to keep it up, keep striving, keep going. Uh, we all gonna be here to support you in anything that you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood, thank you so much for taking me up on that. I remember we were talking in the hallway, and I asked you, what about a jazz band? And you said, maybe it could work, and it worked. So thank you so much for pouring into the babies and for making things happen. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next up, we're gonna have public comments. Um, public comment, um, this is policy section two, uh, two, three, zero. Um, comments are limited to three minutes and will be heard in the following order on the agenda. Um, public comments pertaining to agenda items will be heard before old and new business. So first, we have Ms. Latisha Jones, and then we have Ms. Angela Patterson, and also we have Ms. Penny Woolford. And lastly, we have Mr. Stephen Taylor. You guys can come in that order.
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, Faculty, and Members of the Community. My name is Latissa Jones. I serve as the Village Administrator for the Village of Broadview. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mayor Katrina Thompson, who had every intentions of being here but was unable at this time. With your permission, I kindly ask to continue if I go beyond the allotted speaking time. Back in October, after attending the district's strategic planning meeting, Mayor Thompson was struck by a serious conversation around students' absenteeism. As was shared during this meeting, every day a student is absent or tardy, the school loses funding. Funding that is directly tied to local property taxes, which impact the entire community. Mayor Thompson believes that when the broader community gets involved, we can create real lasting changes. That's why she launched the Mayor's Perfect Attendance Initiative, a program designed to celebrate and initialize students who show up on time, ready to learn. Every student with perfect attendance receives a certificate, and one student is drawn from each grade level, categories K through second, third through fifth, and six through eight, to receive a fifty-dollar gift card, generously provided by Mayor Thompson herself and not using taxpayers' dollars. We saw great results. The first trimester was a great start. The second trimester showed an increase in student attendance. These scholars with second trimester perfect attendance are being recognized. We have hoped that the third semester will bring not only great initiatives, but also great attendance gain that increase academics' achievements. Thank you to the parents, caregivers, and teachers who are doing their part. It truly takes all of us to ensure academic success, and it starts with the students being in the classroom on time and prepared every day school is in session. At our last board meeting last night, the last round of winners were announced, and Mayor Thompson is looking forward to celebrating with all of the eighth grade graduates and their families on Thursday. Congratulations to the class of 2025. Additionally, information about Mayor Katrina Thompson's Young Scholars Program will be available before the official last day of school. This initiative will offer opportunities for students to explore leadership, civic engagement, and personal development through this program. The program would officially start when school is back in session at the end of summer. Lastly, you all are invited to join us at the Fifth Annual Juneteenth Celebration, a powerful partnership between the Village of Broadview, Broadview Park District, Broadview Library, and of course, Lindup School. It celebrates freedom, unity, culture, and we'll love to see you there. In closing, Mayor Thompson extends her sincere thanks to the Board of Education and to Dr. Jackson for your continued support with our residents, our families, and the employees of the Village of Broadview. Partnership and cooperation. I thank you for your time.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Parents and Teachers. Um, I just want to thank, I worked with a group of teachers and counselors today, and I just want to thank them for their continued support with my son and as he moves from fifth grade to sixth grade. I also want to let you all know, um, we've been speaking on splitting the fifth grade all school year. It has happened, yes. Uh, my son is very excited about that change, and we are already seeing a difference in his attitude and wanting to be at school every day. So we just want to thank you all for listening and your continued support. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Um, one item I need to talk to you about concerns a specific or specific staff member, so that needs to be discussed in closed session. So I'd ask that the Board allow me to come in closed session to discuss those things. Um, the other thing I want to talk, um, ask the Board, as we approach this Friday's eighth grade graduation, I want to begin by expressing my appreciation for all the planning and dedication that has gone into preparing this important milestone for our students. However, in light of current culture and climate regarding public safety, I would like to strongly encourage the Board of Education and school administration to consider implementing enhanced safety protocol, protocols for this event. Specifically, I recommend adopting clear bed policies similar to those used at large public venues, such as Soldier Field, recent event, um, including diaper beds, limiting the size of these clear items, um, just for reasons of safety, requiring, um, clear diaper bags, um, with a size limit. While I understand this request is coming on short notice, I believe taking these precautions, even in a modified form, would be reasonable and proactive steps to ensure the safety and peace of mind for all of our students, staff, and families. Graduation should be a time of joy and celebration, and by taking simple, practical steps toward improving security, we can hope ensure that this event remains safe and enjoyable for everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, you're next.
Evening, Board, Administration, Staff, Kids, Community in General. Um, I would like the Board to consider live streaming open board meeting events. Um, it's, some parents can't make it, you know? Some parents are stuck at home, need to see these, some want to be here, but, you know, works out like that sometimes. Transparency has been, uh, theme throughout these past elections. With, that mine use the same thought within considering for this, instead of audio to video as well.
Uh, four-year request?
Yes, I, we did receive a four-year request, and it has been satisfied.
We have upcoming events. Um, there's something we can read on our own. Um, give a few minutes for everybody to read over that. Moving to the consent agenda. Um, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the regular open session minutes for Thursday, May eighth. Uh, that, do you want me to read, read them one by one? Okay, so that's, we have that for number one. So can I get a second?
No, no.
No, we read the whole thing? Okay, all right. Okay, I fit the Thursday, May eighth, the regular close session meeting minutes for Thursday, May eighth, 2025, the Lindup District Ninety-two accounts payable for April fifteenth, 2025, uh, through May twenty-first, 2025, and the amount of five hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and twenty-two and two cent, the Lindup District Ninety-two Ac- Activity Account Reconciliation for April 2025, the Lindup District Ninety-two payroll for April fifteenth, 2025, through May twenty-first, 2025, and the amount of eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cent. The approval of the first read of policies, two point two six zero, four point one fifteen, four, four dash eight zero, five ten, five twenty, five sixty, five one hundred, six one fifty, six two three five, seven ten, seven twenty, seven sixty, seven seventy, seven one eight oh, seven one eight five, seven one ninety, seven two hundred, seven two ten, seven two fifty, seven two seventy, seven three ten, seven three forty, seven two five five, and lastly, two, two six five as presented. Can I get a second?
Well, Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Uh, any discussion?
I'd just like to note for the record, uh, we did get a chance to look over all the, um, the payroll of these dollar amounts. Um, the question was, not a question, but that'll be later on addressed to Dr. Jackson and the amount. When we looked at the payroll for April fifteen through May twenty-first, it's eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. But I believe in April, it was substantially lower, so we didn't get a chance to ask that question. So that's something I will follow up and just see what was that big difference. It's almost five hundred some thousand dollars, I believe, so I'm just, um, suggesting that for informational purposes, see what happened during that period. That's it.
Any more questions or discussion? Roll call.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we gonna go to old business?
New business?
Oh, okay.
Uh-oh, no, you're right.
Yep, right. So, motion carries. Thank you. Um, we're gonna move to item J, old business. Proposal for pre-K, Ms. Pachazza and Ms. Zingo.
Mr. Patterson, thank you for saying my name correctly. That's fine. Good evening, Superintendent, Board Members, Staff Members, Community Members. Thank you for joining us this evening, and we have some exciting news to share.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Jackson, um, staff members, administration, community, students. Lindup's pre-K program is the proud recipient of the Award of Excellence in Preschool Teaching and Learning from Excelrate Illinois, which is our state's quality rating system since two thousand and sixteen. This is the highest recognition a pre-K program can earn in the state of Illinois, and this reflects our school's commitment to delivering high-quality, research-based instruction for preschool-aged students. This Award of Excellence will remain in place so long as our program maintains its gold circle quality rating through Excelrate Illinois. Thank you so much, Board of Education, Dr. Jackson, for your continued support of early childhood education at Lindup. Your leadership and investment help make milestones like this possible.
Now, what is our exciting twenty-five, twenty-six proposal? This proposal was for Preschool for All, which is PFA, a special program offered through the state of Illinois for students ages three to five. Now, the proposal is geared to providing students and getting them ready for kindergarten and like language, math, and social-emotional growth. Now, why is preschool important? You know we have award, we know we're a good program, but why is it important? PFA classrooms have certified teachers, they use fun to teach all of those skills. They engage activities and support and spark the curiosity for lifelong learners. Now, the rationale for this proposal is very simple. We would like to, one, enhance learning experiences, two, improve academic readiness for students, three, support for diverse learners' needs, and four, benefits for family and community. A survey was taken from our families. We had two half-day programs and one full-day program. What was the survey taking? How is that half-day program working from our parents that have to pick up students at eleven AM? So that's why the survey was taken, and these are some of our results. The proposed program would still include those forty PFA slots we have currently. Two classrooms, nothing changed. One teacher, one teacher assistant in each classroom, twenty students per classroom, multi-age classes, ages three, four, and five, inclusive classrooms for a blend of multi-language students, individual education plan students, and general education students. Now, how does this look? The morning will have PFA grant-funded from eight fifteen till eleven AM, two hours and forty-five minutes, currently exists now. The afternoon will be district-funded, eleven AM to three, three thirty PM, four hours and thirty minutes. Now, let's take a closer look as to what that schedule will look like. From eight fifteen till eleven AM, the PFA grant-funded, eleven AM is dismissal for three and four-year-olds who will not be going to kindergarten the next year. They'll be dismissed. At eleven AM for the four-year-olds, students that will be in both classrooms that are going to kindergarten the following year, the teacher or assistant, they will go to lunch. From eleven AM to three thirty, they will have, it is district-funded, they will have nap, story, listening, and comprehension skills, concepts of print, literacy circles, math circles, small group response to intervention for an hour, and large motor for twenty minutes. Now, the focus is on kindergarten readiness skills. Letter recognition, concept of print, number and counting skills, problem solving, fine motor skills, build sustained attention. You have to sit, the older you get, the longer you gotta sit, and focus on socio-emotional skills. Any questions?
Um, yeah, I do. So, um, we're proposing that we do a four-day pre-K, right?
Two full-day classes and stutter, one full-day and two half. But we're still doing forty slots. That part didn't change.
Okay, so it'll be two full days.
But we will still have students that are coming in for half a day because they're three-year-olds, and they would go home. But the four-year-olds will stay for the rest of the day.
Okay, cool. All right. So anybody, if anybody else got a question?
Before you leave, I would like to thank the two of you for first getting that opportunity and getting that rating. That is a big deal, and we do congratulate you on that. And keep up the good work.
Zingo, before you go, good job. Good job, all the pre-K teachers, good job. Thank you for what you do for our students. Really appreciate it.
New business, we want, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the DuPage-West Cook Intergovernmental Agreement to reduce the number, uh, needed to pass an amendment for, from two-thirds to a simple majority, uh, present at the, at the time of voting. Um, I'd like to, uh,
Well, discussion.
Yeah, you want, you have the motion? You have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Brian Dawson, I second.
Any questions?
And Dr. Jackson, you gonna tell us about it?
Yeah. So, the DuPage-West Cook Intergovernmental Agreement, um, it begins with PACE, our cooperative, uh, unit that we send our children to sometimes or most times. And when they're having their meetings, the first thing said that they wanted to have a two-third audience coming in, but they noticed that there was not enough attendance coming in, and so now they would like to change it to just a simple majority and to allow the people to vote that way, so that they're not waiting and trying to, uh, conduct a different meeting or several different meetings.
And, go ahead.
It's going to all of the, uh, member districts of PACE, which is Broadview, Bellwood, uh, Provisal, two oh nine, Berkeley, and Hillside. So all of them will have, all of us will have to adopt this resolution.
Is there a specific things, Dr. Jackson, that they, um, decide on for the schools in West Cook? Like, is it special ed?
Absolutely, it's for special education.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I would like to present the, uh, resolution for the Board of Education, Lindup School, District Ninety-two. Whereas the Board of Education is a member of DuPage County, Du, I'm sorry, DuPage-West, uh, Hook Regional Special Education Association, which operates under an intergovernmental corporation agreement, last revised and adopted on May sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Whereas the D slash W C agreement provides that proposal amendments may be recommended to the D slash W C governing board at any regular scheduled or special meeting of the board. And the proposed amendment, which receives a vote of two-thirds of the members with the D slash W C governing board, shall be forwarded to the adoption to the Board of Education of the members of school district. Whereas, at its regular scheduled meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the proposed amendment to the D slash W C agreement attached is to resolute and redact it, the addition, the addition, as exhibited, as we recommend, to approve by two-thirds of a vote of the members of the D slash WC governing board. And whereas, the D slash WC agreement requires that any proposed amendment to the D slash WC agreement, which receive approval of the D slash governing board by a vote of two-thirds. Two-thirds shall be forwarded for adoption to the Board of Education of the member school district. And whereas, the D slash WC agreement further provides that the amendments provide, approved by the majority of the members of the Board of Education, shall become effective on the day that the majority of the members of the Board of Education has approved the amendments. And whereas, this board has received and reviewed the proposed amendments to the D slash WC agreement to attach to this resolution and redact addition. In Exhibit A, and has determined that the approval of the proposed amendment is in the best interest of the school, of the school board. Now, therefore, the board hereby resolves as following. The proposed amendment to the D slash WC agreement, attached to this resolution and redacted from addition, is Exhibit A, are hereby approved. Have more. The President and Secretary of the Board are hereby authorizing to execute two duplicates original of this resolution, and cause one original to be returned to the D slash WC governing board chairperson and secretary. The resolution shall be in effect upon its adoption. That concludes the re, of the resolution.
Roll call?
Yes. Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Miss, Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Motion carries.
Brian Dawson, I make a motion to approve to accept seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars from the Universal Service Administrative Company to pay ninety percent of our internet cost for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. E-rate.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
You have any discussion? Roll call?
Good evening, Board of Education, community members, staff, parents, guests. So, E-rate is a tax on all cell phone bills. It's a tax goes to schools and libraries like Lindop. It's free money, we apply for yearly, and we get ninety percent of our internet cost. Previously, E-rate's paid for, uh, Chromebooks, equipment, iPads, network equipment, three times, we've done that, and basically, we've got over half million dollars in free money through E-rate. And it's a law passed by Congress in nineteen ninety-six. So, this is a breakdown of how it's gonna look. They pay ninety percent of internet based on this calculation right there. And unfortunately, E-rate's facing some challenges in the court. It's currently at the Supreme Court due to its free money structure, and then we talked about in a technology committee meeting about free hotspots for kids through E-rate, and, uh, Senate's voted fifty to thirty-eight to overturn that, and it's gotta go to the House next. But, um, any questions?
Nope, no questions.
No.
Thank you. Um, we do need to put it on the record that Mr. Buchanan left, correct?
I haven't.
Oh, you have it, okay. Maxine?
Are you ready for the roll call? Yep, there we go.
Roll call?
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Thank you.
Maxine? Motion passes. Motion carries.
You like me read number thirty?
Yeah, you, you next.
I recommend approval to accept and approve the bid recommendation, Learning, uh, Media Center, remodeling work for Edmund F, Lindop School, project number twenty-three oh fifty-three.
I second. Any discussion?
He's gonna give a presentation.
Presentation, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Board, Dr. Jackson, community. Uh, we're here to, uh, talk to you about the, uh, bids that were opened on May sixth in the afternoon. There were five contractors that bid the project. That's generally really good. All five of those contractors were very qualified. Uh, the low, the lowest qualified bidder was Talzma. They're out of Alsip, we have a history with Talzma, Arcandas. Uh, the original founders, uh, started Arcand in nineteen seventy-nine, and they came from another architecture firm called Balifin Balif. Those three guys worked with Talzma even back then, that's how long he's been in business, I believe, in the nineteen sixties is when they started, maybe even earlier. I know they worked with, uh, those guys in the sixties. Uh, we're happy to say that the, with the five bids that came in, they were very tight, very, uh, favorable. Uh, we had allowances in there just to cover, because the environment these days, uh, you just never know uh, how the numbers are gonna come in. They really came in low. Uh, all the alternates are accepted in, in our recommendation, and, uh, we're still slightly under budget. Uh, so, I mean, this is as good as it gets, we're really excited about it. I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
What exactly was the budget for, um, the complete project?
Yeah, it's, uh, with, uh, fees, it's highs four point four, so we're significantly lower.
Okay. Yeah, now, with the monies that we saved, are, do we have plans for the money that's saved as we're on the budget?
Uh, that, that's in discussion now, but, uh, correct, that's in discussion now for whatever, whatever funds are available, and we can look to see where we can implement those.
Okay.
The only question I would have, just, uh, because it is kind of really tight and competitive, just what Arcand's doing as far as change orders. I know sometimes the devil's in the details on the backend, uh, what you've done, just to make sure that, um, the number's the number, or as close as we can get to it.
Right, uh, so, we have allowances to cover any unforeseen. Other than that, I, I think we're very comfortable. The, typically, when you have bids that come in and the numbers are so tight, that means that everybody's seeing it the same way. So, we feel pretty confident that this is gonna be a, uh, a smooth project with regards to change orders.
Thank you. That's it.
I did wanna say the drawings look awesome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We're very excited, I think it's gonna look fantastic.
Yep, um, roll call?
Yep. Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Motion carries.
Okay. I make a motion to approve to attend the CUBE Annual Conference Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, through Sunday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, in Los Angeles, California, for the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six school year, attended by Board Members, Superintendent, and Board Secretary.
Second. Any discussion? Any questions? Roll call?
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Okay, I make a motion to approve to attend the Joint Annual Conference Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, through Sunday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, in Chicago, Illinois, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, attended by Board Members, Administrators, and Executive Assistant. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Member, or excuse me, Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Motion carries.
And I would just like to note, for that, um, conference, it seemed like it's so far ahead, but they have to do this now, because of the deadline that's coming up for registration for June. So, I know it looks kind of far in advance, but we need to do this now, so they could be able to secure their spots. That's it.
Mr. Myrick?
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Freedom Summer School Program to be held at Lindop for rising third through eighth graders totaling one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Forty-two thousand, uh, to be paid by Freedom of School Grant, equaling one hundred and thirty thousand and three hundred dollars. Sixty-four thousand, uh, sixty-four thousand dollars. Seven pairs, forty dollars an hour, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred. One shared social worker, forty-five dollars an hour, for seventy-two hundred dollars. One site coordinator, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. One program director for thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars, and one executive director for seventy-five hundred.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, what's the dates on that, Dr. Jackson, the Freedom School? Like, when does that start and where that going?
Good evening, Board of Education, Administration, and Community. Um, the Freedom School staff has to attend a national training in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they do that, uh, the week after we get out of school, so right away on June third, and they'll be there through June eighth. It's an intensive program that's required by our partnership with the Children's Defense Fund. We are an official Freedom School site. We're also the only Freedom School in the nation that uses local funds to support the Freedom School, and it's a really awesome literacy piece for our students. So, when they come back from that training, they'll get started right away that next week. They'll do all of their setup, um, the last week of school on Thursday and Friday, which I think is May twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
So, it runs concurrently with our summer school?
It does, our summer school will start, um.
Later.
A little earlier, a week earlier. But Freedom School, because of the training, will start that following week.
So, the, 'cause I saw the, I was trying to figure out why it costs a hundred thousand dollars more than a summer school when we have the same number of teachers, and it's because we have to, one, we have to send them off to, the training is part of it, but I was just trying to see what.
Well, it's also six weeks long, and the regular summer school is four weeks. Yes, and it's also a longer day. Um, so, where regular summer school runs, um, for teacher hours from seven fifteen to one thirty, the Freedom School will end for teachers at three thirty. I'm sorry, regular summer school goes to one thirty, Freedom School goes to three thirty.
Okay.
So, it's a longer day, it's also a longer span of time in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, roll call?
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Motion carries.
Um, I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Summer School Program not to exceed seventy students. Grades pre-K through eight totaling seventy-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. That's eleven teachers at forty-five dollars an hour, equaling fifty-nine thousand, four hundred. Three pairs at forty thousand an hour, equaling fourteen thousand, four hundred. One shared social worker at forty-five dollars an hour, that's three thousand, six hundred. This is Monday through Friday from eight AM to one PM, commencing Monday, June second, twenty twenty-five, through Friday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, to be paid through the Educational Fund. Can I have a second, please?
Ms. Cheryl Griffin?
Cheryl Griffin, second. Any discussion, any questions? Roll call?
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
Yay.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve to change the Lindop, uh, School District Ninety-two Board of Education's uh, regularly scheduled board meeting time from five-thirty PM to six o'clock PM, effective July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, on last week, um, I think it was last Friday, I sent an email to you and Dr. Jackson, um, asking if, well, yeah, asking if we can put this on the agenda for discussion, so that, um, like, um, Mr. Taylor stated, that we can now stream these meetings. And that's, this is the reason why, so that for people who can't make it here, that they can see what's going on here from not being in the actual gym room. Um, this is crazy that now this is before the board to change the board meetings from five-thirty to six, which would make it a longer day for not only the teachers who's here, but also the staff, Dr. Jackson, her secretary, um, the teachers, building, some maintenance, security, that, that just, it makes it a longer day, and I, I don't see why we would even wanna think about making it a longer day for them. So, just a consideration for the board to, to, one, think about, and two, we need to have a discussion about it. Thank you.
Also, in addition to that, I would like to add that there are many nights that we don't get out of here until ten-thirty at night. Taking that into consideration, and that's with us starting at five-thirty, that in itself is an added cost for the school when you consider all the maintenance and everything else that's involved in that. So, if we're trying to be cost-conscious with the school, I don't see why come, we can't try to keep it where it is, but I'm one of seven, so we can vote on it. I have a comment also. You have to look around and see how many parents are here tonight. We do have to consider parents and get them time to get here. Some parents are getting off at five-thirty. I mean, we're only asking for, and I agree with this, a thirty minute.
That thirty minutes makes a difference, though, which can be seen.
It makes a difference to parents to show up at the board meeting.
Wait, wait, wait. This can be also seen from your iPhone, that who can't make it here at five-thirty, dudes are clocking out at five-thirty. So, uh, uh, we don't ask that we keep this together. Um, still, uh, what I'm saying is that this is a reason why that it might be a good idea.
Out of respect, I was in the middle of, after you made your comment, I waited, and I was making my comment on the behalf of the parents, that we encourage the parents to come and attend the board meeting.
Correct.
Now, if it's gonna be a cost to thirty minutes, that can be justified, because we have to do what we have to do to make sure everybody have the capability to attend, and not only to look. That includes my, my, um, opinion.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Ms. Johnson, is that for the people who can't be here at five-thirty, this now extends another arm of communication for them who can't make it here. Who's clocking? Princess? Thank you. So, what I was saying is that the people who, like you said, clock out at five-thirty, who can't get here, they can now still have access to what's going on here in the gym room, until they make it here.
In comparison to what? You talking about live streaming or the time?
That's what I was gonna say. Both. If we live, if we still start at five-thirty, the people who can't be here, they can now access it from their phone.
I agree, I agree with you on that. You have four years to do that, and you never livestreamed before, so now we just now livestream, and I think it's a good idea. But you, as president, had the opportunity to do livestreaming, Facebook, YouTube, or whatever, you know, or even show it visually on YouTube.
And you're correct. But yes, now, this is where we're at. So, discussion for the board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, thank everything for their input, but, yeah, I, I, I agree with Maxine, you know, there was, um, time where there, you know, you were president, and then you also had the support of the board. I just wanna, my biggest thing, I'm not opposed to, and I'm open to discussing, you know, any. I just want to, my biggest thing I'm not opposed to, and I'm open to discussing, you know, anything that the board shares. But my, my only concern is I do want to make it fair for parents to be able to get here. Also, I think we kind of like crossed over because this is just talking about extending the meeting, not about live streaming. Not that I'm against the live streaming, I'm willing to open and talk about that, but that's not what is presented here. It's just strictly the change of the, the board meeting time, just out of respect for the parents. You know, because I don't know if the, if, when the last time you probably looked on the YouTube and the audio, it's very transparent. It shows everything that we show here. You can hear everybody clearly. I mean, it's, it's really nice, you know, the way it is. I don't think anybody would feel slighted if they go on there and see how we present it now. So, you know, again, not trying to say I'm not open, but I like to stick to exactly what's on here because we kind of cross paths with streaming and then just the change of the meetings.
Okay, so that, that's respectful. That's respectful. But let's, let's back that up, though. Hold on, because now we're still talking about extending the time for the staff members here at Lindop that's been here since seven-thirty, seven-forty-five. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
We're still extending their day for them to sit here at a board meeting even longer. That's what I'm saying.
And I, and I, of course, want to acknowledge that although I, I do want to make sure that anybody who stays past their time, if there's, you know, if there is a slight cost to the thirty minutes, I mean, I just feel as if, you know, it would be worth it to open it up to parents that, that, that do get off at five o'clock or five-thirty. Because one of the goals that I want to achieve on this board is to increase parental involvement, actually with them coming and sitting and being here. My only reservation with, with, with the streaming, even though, like I said, the audio is great, how they have it, is that I just want to make sure that we give parents a reason to come, you know, because once you can stream it, you know, we might see even less parental participation. So, you know, I, but I do hear you about it, respect that it could be some cost implications for thirty minutes, but I think our parents are worth it. And I'm one of seven again, but I think that works.
If I might add into this, at the time when we were meeting at a later time, we originally were meeting at a later time. We were getting about the same participation with parents as we are now, which is why we decided to go to an earlier time, taking everything into consideration. And with regards to the streaming versus audio that was mentioned, everyone's been talking about full transparency. I don't see why it should be a problem now if we're talking full transparency. And that's just my opinion on it.
Anybody else got anything? Room call?
Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
No.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
No.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
No.
Motion carries. Ms. Johnson?
Make a motion to approve engagement letter with Otis and Murphy and Fraser and McGrath LTD for legal service at the School District Attorney, at School District Attorney, effective immediately.
Second. We have any questions from board members?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Over.
My, my question and concern about this is where did these people come from? None of the board has met them. We didn't even know that there was talks about engaging with another law firm. For full transparency, that's strike one. There is, there was no transparency in the idea for conversations to be had that the rest of the board knew nothing about. No one reached out to myself. This is my first time here. Well, not first time because I read it on Friday when the agenda came out, but this was my first time hearing anything about conversations with a new law firm. So if we're going to do things, it needs to be done with the whole board knows what's going on, not just certain people. Thank you.
Buchanan, you have?
Yes, I just, I don't know where this came from. I didn't get a phone call. No one talked to me about it. I did reach out to a board member, and we had discussion, and he was told about this situation. So my thing is, Mr. President, you just became the president, and you putting stuff on the agenda without even talking to the other board members, and my understanding my understanding is that, you know, you're supposed to communicate with us. That's all I'm saying, you know? I don't know what's going on. I don't know why. What's, what's the problem with our attorneys? I don't understand. I mean, so I think we should have just had a discussion about it.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that we table this, seeing as how the rest of the board was not privy to any of this information. We were not given information on this law firm. So therefore, I'm motion that we table it until we do have a full discussion with information on this.
What I want to say is that there were, we all get forty-eight hours to view the agenda. So the board members did, as Mr. Hannah stated, that he saw it on Friday. Then I also followed up with an email asking if anybody had any questions as far as who they are, if I could have let me please step up.
And before the attorney speak, you were notified through your email that we had the packets through Gmail, the packets for the attorney, the new attorneys that we want to bring onboard for the school. This not, this hasn't been just a closed meeting where you guys have been excluded. If you read your emails, the packets was here, the information was there also. This law firm has been in business for over forty-some years. They support DEI. They're less expensive than the, the attorneys currently. With the attorneys also that are partners with them have, are teachers, also lawyers, special ed, and they have worked in the community for at least over forty years. And if you do your research on Otis and you will find out a lot more information instead of coming here not knowing or even with this type of question.
Okay, wait, wait, before you go any further, wait. I, I was sent for full transparency. Everybody can hear me. I was sent the email today at eleven-twenty-two AM. That's not forty-eight hours, Sir President. But today, from Mr. Patterson to me at eleven-twenty-two AM, asking if, good, good morning, fellow board members, can you all let me know if there are any questions regarding Olson, Murphy, Fraser, McGrath Law Firm? Thank you. This is, this is to, good morning, fellow board members. I'm the only one on this email.
I sent it individually because I know we're not supposed to be having a meeting before we have a meeting. But, and I don't want to discredit what you said. I'm not going to deny that I didn't send it at that time. But again, like I said, forty-eight hours, we all, that was sent to Dr. Jackson. We all have forty-eight hours to respond, but, and I hear you, and I'm not trying to, you know, act as if everything you said is factual, but we do have the forty-eight hours for us to respond while she sends it to you, and you, right, I did send it at that time. But if we could, because you do want to find out, you asked the question of who are these people? That's what you said.
Right, but that, that's something that we could have discussed together before you brought this law firm here.
Understand.
Back to Maxine. This, so what you, what you just basically opened up is saying that this is a law firm that you personally know, you personally dealt with, because it sounds like that.
No, I did not say I, no, wait a minute, let me correct you. No, I just have not.
Now let me talk.
Wait a minute, I have, I have not.
Let you talk, let me talk.
Can we please?
My thing is, is that you said, you said that you know about how, how long this law firm's been in the community, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
You're, I know, we know nothing about them other than yourself, Mr. Patterson, and who else? I, I know nothing about them.
Okay.
So this is something that could have been discussed with the board before it's put on the agenda for approval.
Well, we, we do have to follow the Over Meeting Act, you know, so we can't do it in a group.
So again, this is something.
For years.
Mr. Hannah?
Okay.
We again.
You can let these people talk.
Before we do that, I would like to ask Dr. Jackson, what was the packet that you received for the board members? What, what attorneys was that for, the packet that you received?
That was for Robin Swartz.
So that was for Robin Swartz, not for this attorney group? Okay, so in other words, we were not given any information on this attorney's group?
Well, what I say was, if I could, Ms. Griffin, are you, so I can answer you?
Yes, I am.
Forty-eight hours, again, like I said, is what we all have as board members and as a collective, not just, I'm only one of seven. All of us, we have to, we see the agenda within forty-eight hours, and we have an opportunity to ask questions. As Mr. Hannah said, once I was alerted that there was questions of, from the other board members, I did follow up with an email at eleven-something, like you said. So, you know, and again, if anybody's going to bring somebody to the table, you're going to do your due diligence on it, and you're going to put it out there. I put these people in front of you all, forty-eight hours, and also I, I did give the email at eleven-something, but there was time for questions and things like that. But as you stated, if we can just let her give some background, so could you go ahead, ma'am, please?
Good evening. Thank you so much, first of all, for allowing me the opportunity to present on behalf of OMFM Law Offices. I am Felicia Fraser. I am the name managing partner at the firm. I've been with the firm for twenty-five years. Just to give you a little bit of background about me, in my prior life, I was a prosecutor in Domestic Violence Court for Cook County. I've been with the firm for twenty-five years, and I head the Labor and Employment Division of the firm. I do the managing of the partners. We represent over fifty-two municipalities, school districts, park districts, and townships. We, we have many townships. And first of all, if you were to Google OMFM Law Offices, you can see that we are very well-known in the community, and your, your current firm is too. There's no doubt about that. But we're not rookies in this area of the law. We are very experienced. What we do, the great thing about our firm is that we are a one-stop shop, meaning that within our office, it's some offices, but not all law firms. If we have a litigation department, the other named partner, Mike McGrath, has the litigation. We do property tax appeals. We do the labor and employment work. We do the day-to-day work. So it's very rare, unless there's a conflict of interest, where we would have to transfer a case out and have another firm to perform the work. There's really not anything in our office that we cannot handle, and I actually, years ago, probably fifteen years ago, I actually represented Bellwoods School District under, I believe, Dr. Philistine Murphy was the superintendent at that time. And so I am not a rookie. I've been doing this for a long time, and it's not bragging, but I am, I do my job very well. And if you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask me. That's why I'm here.
Any questions? Room call?
What's the motion on the floor?
The motion is, the motion is for, for us to get the legal service, legal services of the district's attorney immediately for this group.
Who's second?
Yeah, I second. And we already had the discussion, so room call, please.
So let's be clear, Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson made the motion.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
And Mr. Patterson, you second, correct? Okay. So Board President, Mr. Patterson?
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson?
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin?
Nay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah?
No.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick?
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're going to go on Board President Report. If I could just make a statement as opposed to a report. I don't have a report. I'm new. I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight. I also want to thank all my fellow board members up here who did vote me unanimously the president of the board. And I'm hoping that I can gain your trust. I'm hoping I can gain your confidence in my decision-making. Again, it was a unanimous vote for me to be the president. I also have just a little bit about myself. I have twenty-three years that I've been working for school districts, and about seven of those years I've been an administrator, taking care of school business. I believe I'm probably, and I'm not, I don't know everybody's background, but I'm probably the most qualified person here with school business based off my years of experience at the school. I also hold a CPS or CPMM. Those are Facility Engineering Certification. I have countless hours of professional developments as well. So I believe I'm qualified to make these decisions. I do want to work diligently with the board and make sure that everything's run smooth, because at the end of the day, the kids are first. We want to make the best decisions for the children and the taxpayers, of course, and I thank you all for your support. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, Board of Education, community staff members, administrators. So, vision for twenty-four, twenty-five, keeping the main thing the main thing, no weapon formed, show prosper. Board goal two, facilities. Meeting with Archon, as they discussed earlier. We went over the joints, and we also went over the timelines. Board goal three, programs and services. Twenty-twenty-five, eighth grade graduation. The ceremony begins promptly at five PM in the Lindop gymnasium. Seating will be reserved for board members. Please plan to arrive no later than four forty-five PM. And if you would like, any board members would like to update their happy video or want to be included in it and have not recorded yet, please contact Mr. Elliscu as soon as possible Friday, the twenty-third of May. Okay, board goal three, programs and services, Reading Literacy Week, April seventeenth. We had mystery readers all through the building, and the children were trying to guess who was in which costume. Very, a lot of fun for them and intriguing. Board three, programs and services, National Junior Honor Society, we had on on April seventeenth. Our spring showcase on April thirtieth. It was amazing. Thank you all for coming out. Programs and services, Northern Illinois Career Fair, I was attended on April thirtieth. McTeacher Night on May eighth. Muffins with mom on May twelfth by PTA. Community District Relations, again, kindergarten celebration. And we don't have a graduation, we just have a celebration, and not just because we want them to know that this is not your last time and that you will continue on, and they do readers theater. Recruitment and retention, staff longevity. We recognize Mr. Nichols for twenty-five years, Missel Party Soforo, twenty-five years. Mrs. Rubenstein, twenty years, Mr. Jerome Noby, twenty years. Ms. Francine Morris, twenty years, Mr. Matt Coles, twenty years. Myself, ten years, Ebony Jones, ten years. And next, Property Tax Relief Grant. I wanted to say that every year we do apply for the Property Tax Relief Grant. And the current year, we have two hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars that Lindop received. And for the prior year, we received nineteen thousand, eighty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. So thank you very much, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. We have a committee reports. So I know you have more in front of you, but we're going to read off the ones that's relevant. They're going to be meeting this month. So the Pace Governing Board, Mr. Dawson and Mr. Hannah, they'll be meeting May twenty-first at six PM. The Policy Committee with Mr. Dawson and Mr. Myrick, they will be meeting Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty-five, at four PM. The next meeting date is Wednesday, August sixth, at four thirty. Negotiations Committee, Mr. Patterson and Ms. Johnson, Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, at four PM. And the next meeting is Thursday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, at four o'clock PM.
Okay, there are two items on that committee report that, number one, there was a meeting held for the Policy Committee on May first. Is there anything that we should be made aware from that one?
I would say that Dr. Jackson and I were on that, and it was covered in the consent agenda, but there wasn't any major thing.
Okay, thank you. Also, on the second, when there was a negotiations meeting held with Mr. Hannah and myself, for which for which that was a very productive meeting. I think the next meeting is scheduled for May the twenty-ninth, for which there will be new chairheads with that.
Then also, um, do you want to talk about the PACE, uh, Mr. Dawson, on that last meeting?
Uh, yeah, um, actually, no, no, no. I don't have anything to put on that.
Okay.
I move that the board go into closed session under five I O C S, uh, one twenty slash two, C, one forty-nine, and ten to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the public body, evidence or testimony presented in op, op, uh, open hearing or enclosed hearing were specifically, uh, authorized by law scrutiny, procedures, school, building safety, and scr, scr, scrutiny, security, um, student disciplinary cases, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students at six forty-one P M. Um, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting.
Everybody have. Um, make a motion, um, at seven thirty P M. to go in, back into closed session.
Second.
Second.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Greg Buchanan, absent.
And Dr. Jackson. Um, we're recording.
We make a motion to reconvene into open session at eight oh nine P M. Last second. Roll call.
One second.
Oh, uh, she says she wants to.
One second. Yes, so Board President, Mr. Patterson.
President.
Yay. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah, absent. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Board Member Brian Dawson, I make a motion to accept the resignation submitted by middle school special education teacher, Taryn J. Patla, effective May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Last second.
Board President, Mr. Patterson. Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah, absent. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
And we are adjourned.
Uh, move, I make, Brian Dawson, I make a motion to, uh, adjourn at eight eleven. Last second.
Board President, Mr. Patterson.
Yay.
Board Vice President, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Board Member, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Myrick.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Hannah, absent, and Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent. Thank you.